Welcome everyone to the October 6th meeting of the Kings Park Board of Education. If we could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Kings Park Board of Education. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. We're going to start with a presentation of the 2019-2020 independent audit by Neraki Smith LLP. Dr. Egan.
Okay, I believe we have Mike Neraki on the line. Mike, if you could unmute yourself and I am gonna screen share your.
Now it's a law document.
Okay, can you hear me now? Good. Great. Thank you, Dr. Egan. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Neraki. I'm a senior partner in the CPA accounting firm Neraki Smith. And on behalf of my entire firm, I want to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education and the community of Kings Park for entrusting us with the important responsibility in serving as the district's external auditors. Every school district in New York State is required each year to have an audit of its books and records as of the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, by an independent CPA firm. Our firm is a firm of licensed CPAs who are qualified to perform this particular task. And this evening, I'm here to give you an overview of the results of the audit that we recently completed for the year ended June 30, 2020. Our audit consisted of an audit of the district's financial statements for the recent fiscal year in accordance with United States generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, as well as the provisions of the Federal Office of Management and Budget Uniform Guidance relating to your federal award programs, as well as an audit of the district's extra classroom activity funds. I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly compliment the district on its audit readiness and responsiveness, as well as for the timely and accurate closing of the books and records. This is primarily due to the excellent cooperation that we receive from the business office. And in that regard, I really want to express our appreciation to the business official of the district, Shannon Mean, as well as District Treasurer Diane Paulman, who really coordinates a good part of the audit that needs to be done, as well as the entire staff. In particular, I want to cite Sierra Rosa, who I saw on the call tonight, who's been working with our firm for a very long time. The entire staff takes the audit very seriously. We receive excellent cooperation and the audit's done on an efficient basis. We also want to express our appreciation to Dr. Timothy Egan, who sets a great tone at the top in ensuring that we receive the cooperation support that we need. I want to note that most of this audit this year was performed on a hybrid basis of both onsite and remote auditing techniques. Our firms made big investments in IT the last couple of years. And certainly with the onslaught of the COVID-19 pandemic, it was difficult to perform our procedures as traditionally done, which is typically 100% onsite. So we met early with the district back in April to come up with an audit plan to ensure that we could perform the audit on a timely basis and get the work completed by both onsite as well as remote work. And this worked out very well. I also want to cite the work of the district's audit committee. We had a meeting with the audit committee back on September 21st, where we went through a detailed review of the resulting financial statements of the district, presenting an overview and answering any questions that the audit committee would have. Just to spend a couple of moments to give you some of the highlights of the financial statements, which look like this. And once the financial statements are accepted by the Board of Education, there'll be a public notice that the financial statements are available for review by the public. First, we issue various auditors' reports on the information as submitted to us. I'm pleased to say that our reports are what we would call a clean or unmodified opinions indicating that we performed our audit in accordance with professional standards and finding all the information to be fairly stated. We do not cite the district for any material weaknesses nor significant deficiencies in internal control. Nor did we become aware of any compliance findings as a result of our work under government auditing standards and the OMB Uniform Guidance. As far as some of the fiscal amounts, the district, as I've mentioned to you in the past, like any other government, has two sets of financial statements included in the report. First is the district-wide financial statements, which are prepared on a full economic accrual basis of accounting, including both current and long-term fiscal elements of the district. Just to give you an idea of some of the numbers, as of June 30, 2020, the district had total assets and deferred outflows of approximately $131 million against liabilities and deferred inflows of $253 million, resulting in a net deficit of $122 million. Note that this deficit is primarily the result of the recognition of the district's long-term obligation for retiree health benefits, which totaled $155 million as of the end of the most recent fiscal year. From an operational standpoint, the district had total revenues of $94.1 million against expenses of $99 million, resulting in a decrease in net position for the year of approximately $4.9 million. The governmental fund financial statements focus on the current operations of the district, the most significant fund being the general fund, the budget of which is approved by the taxpayers of the district. As of June 30, 2020, the district's balance sheet in the general fund reflected a total fund balance of $22.6 million, of which $14.3 million was restricted towards the areas of retirement, workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, employee benefits, capital, and repair reserves. $4.5 million was appropriated for the 2021 budget and $3.8 million was the remaining unassigned fund balance, which was within the New York State legal limit, which is 4% of the following year's general fund budget. From an operational standpoint, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance reflected a positive change in fund balance for the general fund of $4.1 million, this on a total budget of $95 million. This change, this positive change was primarily due to improved fiscal management of expenditures as well as cost savings as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. I want to end my presentation by pointing out that the Kings Park Central School District receives special recognition, differentiating itself from most of the other school districts, not only on Long Island, but all of New York State, as they voluntarily prepare a comprehensive annual financial report each year. A comprehensive annual financial report includes the minimum financial statement information required by the New York State Education Department as part of the annual audit, but it also includes extensive detailed information, statistical data, as well as other important information from the district with regard to its operations, its finances, its history, as well as 10 years' worth of comparative fiscal data. The district has been doing this now for some time. And as a result of that, each year it's been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. We expect that this year's report will be filed within the proper deadlines and that the district will hopefully once again receive this prestigious award. Kings Park is only one of two districts on all of Long Island that has been receiving this prestigious award and one of six districts in all of New York State. So I congratulate the district on its continued hard work in the fiscal area, as well as the successful audit this year. And I thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neraki, for spending time going over this report with us. Does anyone have any questions?
I guess maybe one. Mike, thanks for the presentation. Could you spend a little bit more time on the $155 million retiree health benefit obligation causing the net deficit and how that compares generally? How that's dealt with in other districts? Is that the same or different than what others are saying and how it compares?
Yes. With the $155 million represents, let me back up. Right now, retirees of the Kings Park Central School District receive health benefits. Their insurance premiums are paid on a pay-as-you-go basis each year by the district, essentially on the cash basis of accounting. Unlike your pension, there's really no funding mechanism to pay it any other way. However, under generally accepted accounting principles, and this area really is an area that changed within the past 15 to 20 years with respect to local governments, a decision was made to recognize what is the current value? What is the present value of the retirement health benefits that have been earned and are due owing so far to your existing retirees, as well as your current teachers who have been working hard? Think of a social study teacher who's been working for the district for 25 years and throughout that 25-year period has been earning the right to receive health benefits when that individual retires. That's a liability that the district has been accumulating all along. Up until a couple of years ago, that liability was never recognized. And now, we do recognize the liability. I should note that that obligation is determined by an independent actuarial firm who goes through all of the district's personnel information and based on their formulas comes up with that particular obligation. But note that it's an obligation not only of the Kings Park Central School District, an obligation that every school district on Long Island, New York State, and the United States has, but it relates to every local government. So the town has this obligation, the county has this obligation, New York State, as well as the federal government. And you can imagine, if you add up all of these obligations throughout the country, it's about $2.3 trillion. That's where the take. So it's certainly a large obligation and it's something that needs to be recognized because technically it is an obligation of the district in the long run. The services that have been rendered by both current and prior employees, that should be reflected in the financial statements. Obviously, you're not gonna have to pay the entire $155 million in one year or even in the next couple of years. But the amount of money that's being paid out on a year-to-year basis as the amount of retirees continues to grow, that obligation will also continue to grow. So one other point, New York State does not permit local governments to fund this obligation. So at one point, it was thought that, like a pension plan, monies could be put aside to start providing for this obligation. But for some reason, New York State has not permitted it to be done as of yet. So this is really the driving force creating the deficit in the district's overall net financial condition on a full accrual basis.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mike, thank you again. You know, you have another meeting to go to tonight, right?
Yes. Busy time of year for accountants. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank our business office, Mrs. Neen, and her staff for everything that they've done. They do such a great job. Every year, Mr. Neraki talks about how wonderful our business office is and we really appreciate everything that you do. So thank you. Next on the agenda is the COVID-19 instructional model update, Dr. Egan.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Just give me a minute. I'm gonna share my screen and pull a PowerPoint up. One second. Okay, so good evening, everybody. And welcome. The board had asked me to take a look at our instructional model and we've been monitoring it very closely. And I have an update prepared for the board and the community as to next steps this evening. We in New York are well into reopening. We are certainly headed and continue to head towards reopening more as we go forward week to week. There are a couple of hotspots in New York State right now, but infection rates continue to be relatively low, especially here on Long Island. But a couple of things to keep in mind that remind us that we are not completely back to normal is the fact that you still can't go to the movies. Broadway is closed through the end of 2020. You can go to the gym or the health club, but it's only open at 33% indoors. You can go out to eat, but indoor dining is still limited to 50%. If you're a bowler, which is a nice, big, open area, you can certainly go bowling, but bowling alleys are still limited to 50% capacity. And you can actually go to the mall, but malls can only reopen with specific ventilation requirements. So we do can continue to reopen around New York State, but those are just a couple of reminders. You know, schools are certainly not the only institution out there that isn't quite open at 100% just yet. And I actually just added this slide earlier today. This is a slide, it was Slide 10 in a New York State Board of Regents' presentation on September 14th. And it summarizes on the right-hand side how the 5,465 public schools in New York State reopened this September. And you'll see that the vast majority of schools across the state opened up just the way we did, 2/3 on hybrid, about 18% in-person and 15.1% completely remote. I'll also note that we were only hybrid on elementary level for two weeks, and I'll come back to that in a little bit. But certainly across New York State, the model of choice for September was the hybrid, the hybrid model. And again, this is right from a Board of Regents' presentation mid-September. It was only two weeks ago. So the big five challenges that all schools across the country continue to face for reopening is these five bullets right here. Lunch, in terms of space and supervision, for students to be able to eat lunch six feet apart because they're doing so without masks on. Food service, our school district utilizes Aramark. There are two big food service companies on Long Island, Aramark being one of them, and making sure that they can operate safely and we can also get food to our students learning remotely at home. What the socially-distanced classroom looks like and that space requirement for each student in the classroom. Being able to operate physical education, music, and art. Physical education and music present some additional space considerations in terms of not six feet, but 12 feet if you're involved in aerobic activity or you're playing a wind instrument. And transportation, which of course is an extension of the school building, and being able to transport close to 3,000 students in Kings Park to and from school daily. So we began the school year with what I called an overarching rare goal. This is a photo from 1918. If you Google "pandemic 1918" and look at some images, you're gonna see that some pictures pop up that look very much like today, except they're in black and white and people are dressed a little different than you might see in 2020. But this was our very simple, rare goal for the 2020-2021 school year. Re-enter, assess, remain, and expand. And I'm gonna go through each one in a little bit more detail right now. So we know that 2020 will absolutely be a school year like no other. We know that for sure. The interesting thing is, for September 8th, you have some staff who had not been in the building since March 13th. And then you also had some staff, some of our bus drivers, our administrators, clerical custodians, who really never left and continued working since Memorial Day in May. And one of the things that we really had to keep in mind is that whether you're a student or an employee, everyone has a different degree of anxiety in terms of being back in school, being in occupied places where there are many individuals instead of maybe just the individuals in your household. And we successfully navigated re-entering and that level of anxiety so far as we got through September. We've repeatedly said that we needed to walk before we run. And we've continued to emphasize that the word calm is super important, definitely the word of the month, possibly the word of the year, in just trying to keep everybody calm and anxiety levels as low as possible. And again, our primary focus was to get our students, our teachers, back in school, reopen, re-enter safely and slowly. The A in rare is assess. We wanted to get our students back in and then we wanted to see where they are academically and on a mental health basis. We've used our remote days as an opportunity to maximize our in-person time for instruction and maybe incorporating some authentic assessment into those remote days. And you will see at home this year, students working more on what we call quadrant D items, which is synthesizing, creating, predicting, debating, things of that nature, trying to get into an authentic assessment and high levels of knowledge and application. And we call that quadrant D. And then the next letter in our acronym is remain. And we've been very successful. We've had a few blips and bumps along the road, but we've been highly successful in keeping our students in school, which is of the utmost importance. But we need to continue to be vigilant in terms of what I call the four Ws: wearing a mask, washing hands often and thoroughly, watching our distance and wiping down high-touch surfaces regularly. So that brings us to the last letter in our acronym, which is expand. And we're ready to do that now. Thanks to the leadership and the advisory and the recommendations from our Safe Pride Committee this past summer, we had about 94, 95 individuals on that committee. They made some solid recommendations and we were able to effectively reopen. And as we said we would, we have continued to monitor and evaluate for the last four weeks our instructional plans. We've also carefully listened to the input of both parents and teachers. And we're super proud of the fact that on September 21st, we were able to bring all of our K-5 students back into our building. That was huge, not only for the students, but for their parents who need to work and have responsibilities of their own. And this was a quantum leap forward for us on the elementary level. So tonight, what we're gonna take a look at is our next area of focus, which is our secondary level. And in particular, there were three areas that we really focused on and we felt we could do a little better. One is working to get the students in person, even if it's just a little bit more on average each week, working to enhance instruction on the days that students are learning from home remotely. And third, allowing our plan to seamlessly flip to a red-at-home learning model, which has tended to happen with many schools in our area over the past couple of weeks. Parkview in particular, where we might need to go to e-learning for just a day or maybe two and changing our plan and tweaking it a little bit so that that might be a little bit more seamless on the secondary level if we need to do that. And in particular, here are our plans for October 19th, which is a little less than two weeks away at the high school and the middle school. So this Wednesday, which is tomorrow, will be our last scheduled remote day for all students. We had initially worked remote Wednesdays into the plan and they've been somewhat helpful in helping us prepare. If we do need to flip to a full remote day, we were also able to do some much-needed professional development on those days for teachers. But this Wednesday would become our last full remote day. We have some teachers that have already begun piloting live streaming. We've talked a lot about live streaming and indicated that we would continue to look in this area and plan and expand. And we do have teachers on the secondary level that have already begun piloting in this area. As of October 19th, all of our classes on the secondary level will incorporate live streaming and students will be able to follow the typical bell schedule at home on their Chromebooks using Google Meet. And then Wednesdays are going to become an in-person instructional day. That will alternate between the two cohorts. So we have had a two day a week model on the secondary level, it'll now become a two, three model. And it'll flip back and forth between A and B so that we can equalize the time that the A cohort and the B cohort is in school. Here's what it looks like on our day calendar. Here's today. So we had been following a 1122 model. Tomorrow will be the last e-learning day for students at home. We'll go 3344 after Columbus Day. And then on the 19th, we're going to revert back to the typical day cycle. 1234, 1234, 12 and then it continues into November. We'll have B students in person on the 21st. A students in person on the 28th. And then for the most part, it flip flops moving forward between the A and the B cohort. And just to give our parents a little background on what live streaming looks like. Because I think everybody has a slightly different perception of what that might look like. It's definitely going to provide more structure for our students on remote days when they're learning at home. Because the students are going to be able to follow the typical school bell schedule and access instruction in the classroom via Google Meet. Live streaming, for the most part, can take on two forms. There's the screen share, which I am doing right now. So you're hearing my voice and you're seeing my screen. And this is one form of live streaming. And then a second form of live streaming is what you might also see as I waved to you. Where there is some live video of the teacher. And that video will be focused solely on the teacher in the classroom. But you will see one or the other or both of them in terms of live streaming. A logical question, you know, why October 19th? The optimal time to enact this change is on a day one. So we can move the day calendar and rotation forward. So the next chance that we would have the ability to do that after today is October 19th. We are still troubleshooting a few minor technology issues. We have a few asks on the part of some of our teachers that we're trying to fulfill. That gives us another week and a half to make sure that we address that. We've also been closely monitoring our bandwidth on remote learning Wednesdays. And this was by design. We currently have one gig of bandwidth. And we've been closely monitoring the spike on remote learning Wednesdays, which has been between 800 and 900. Megabytes, so 800 and 900 is certainly less than one gig. But we do. Plan on expanding our bandwidth to 2.0 gig. And delaying until the 19th allows us to make sure that that has in fact taken effect. Google also has several planned upgrades that either have already taken effect or. Should take effect in the coming days and we didn't want to make a change while we're still waiting on those updates and what they look like. We really want to make sure that this transition is seamless and effective. And that we can support our teachers in the best way possible. So we just wanted to make sure that the Google Classroom and Google Meet was updated and ready to go when we flipped the switch on live streaming. And again, I just want to reiterate, it's going to take all of us in the Kings Park community to keep the kids in school. If we want the best chance of doing this and keeping COVID outside of our schools. We need to continue to make good choices and encourage our young ones to make good choices. You might have read in Newsday or the Patch, there was recently a social event in Suffolk County. We had several high school students from multiple high schools and multiple schools in Suffolk County attend that event. There was about a dozen COVID cases that came as a result. We just need to make sure that we avoid those kinds of situations and continue to practice the four Ws. So that we can keep COVID out of our schools. If you need any information on the district plans or resources on COVID, everything is on our website. You go to the Health and Safety Department dropdown menu, you have our September re-entry plans. Our school instructional model summaries are there, we will be updating William T. and Kings Park High School. Currently, we're still showing the September models there, but we'll update them. There's a bunch of coronavirus guidance and reference materials from the CDC, the Department of Health. State Education Department, so on and so forth. All of my letters to the community, there's a whole area. Where all those letters are posted as soon as they are e-blasted to the community. And all of our safe pride re-entry committee documents are clearly posted to our website for your viewing pleasure. And as we continue to work through this pandemic, I just wanted to remind us all that. You know, it doesn't seem like it right now, but this too shall pass. Eventually, the tide is going to come in as we've all seen when we've been to the ocean. You write something in the sand and eventually the tide does come in and take it away. So there is this concept of impermanence, we're not quite there yet. We don't know when this is going to pass, but it certainly will happen. We just need to hang in there and hang together until we get to that point. So I just want to end with. You know, we did indicate that we would clearly listen to the community and the impact of COVID. Continue to try to improve our instructional models. And we've continued to do that and we will continue to do that. Kings Park remains a great place to work, raise a family. No one does family like Kings Park and this was one of my favorite pictures from the pandemic where you have the rainbow. Seemingly leading out of Kings Park and the word resilience right there on the fence. I want to thank the Board of Education for the opportunity for us to reflect on our learning plan. And make some tweaks and present it publicly, not only to the board, but also to be able to present that to the public this evening.
Dr. Regan, thank you so much for that presentation and I loved your picture at the end. While you were presenting, I was thinking just two years ago, we were so excited that we were starting a one-on-one. Device plan and here we are. Not even two years later and we have just done so much. And stepped up our plan with the COVID and we were able to get devices for. For all of our secondary schools, even the sixth graders. It's I think we've been very diligent in getting this done, so thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Any questions?
And I would just add, you know, echo those comments and appreciate the thoughtfulness and. Continuing to do what we said and move forward. Analyze how things are going, do it in a thoughtful way and do it in a way that gives us the best chance to be successful. So I think this is a great step forward and look forward to getting there and staying there.
Absolutely, keeping the kids in school is our goal. Like we said, keeping the kids in school, it takes a community effort to do that. You have to all be mindful. The pandemic is still around and we really have to practice that social distancing as much as possible. And reiterating washing hands, keeping safe, keeping healthy. You all want to stay in school for the school year, thank you everyone.
Okay, so next. We have a presentation, the Spring 2020 Kings Park High School Advanced Placement Results, Dr. Partizano.
Thank you, Mrs. Nally, good evening, everyone, I'm just going to share my screen. Okay, can everybody see that slide? Great, okay, so what I'd like to do for the board and the public tonight is just to review our AP results for 2020. Typically, we review our high school Regents exam results along with advanced placement. But we all are well aware that there was no administration of high school Regents exams in June or August. However, there was an administration of the advanced placement exams. And just to kind of frame out the differences from the traditional administration and the changes that came about in 2020. Traditionally, most of these exams were in person. With 2020, they were in an online format. They typically are a two-hour exam, they were modified to be about 45 minutes. In a traditional format, you would see multiple choice and free responses. On the 2020 format, they were free responses only. Typically, students complete their written responses in person, they submit their finished work to their proctor who's present in front of them. With the 2020, the students were able to complete the exam online. Or they would to submit a photo of their handwritten work. There were some clearly some challenges with the technology on the end of College Board. They are the organization that administers the advanced placement exams and it was done on their platform. So we had some limitations in what we could do as far as control. Most of it was really through the College Board. However, the support that was given to our students from Dr. Lesler, who serves as the AP Coordinator. I thank her tremendously for her support of faculty as well as students, as well as our AP teachers. Trying to learn the changes themselves and communicate this with our students and support them as much as they can. College Board did have some challenges, they wound up giving a second set of makeup exams for students who had difficulties with the technology. So they did make some adjustments, but definitely far from the traditional format that we've seen in the past. However, we're very proud of the fact that our participation rate remained high this year, even with those challenges. And I think that's really a testimony to the perseverance of our students, you know, in these challenges and continuing to move forward. So some of our results, I'm taking a look at the exams that were administered, biology, we had 34 students. And here's just some comparative data between Kings Park's mean scores, New York State and global. And then the percentage of students who scored three or higher. Just for background for folks, typically AP scores range from one to five. Scores three, four and five typically will earn many students, not all, a college credit depending upon the university or the college. Can take a look at some of the students that took our physics one, physics two, chemistry, environmental science. Calculus, a fair amount with calc AB, 82.8% getting a score of three or higher. A calc BC, we had one student there, computer science, statistics. European history, 32 students, 87 and a half percent scoring three or higher. World history, 84.3 and 89 students taking that. US history, large number of students, 102 and just shy of 80% scoring three or higher. US government politics, 72 students and psychology, 38 students and just shy of 82% scoring three or higher. Italian, we had seven students take the exam and Spanish 36. We had one student independently just take the AP exam in German and students can do that, they can go independently and come in and request an AP exam. English language and composition, 62 students, English Lit 68. The seminar, the board will recall that we put the AP Capstone program in a couple of years ago and that consists of two courses, the AP Seminar course. And the AP Research course, so we had 100% of the kids in the seminar class, 28 of them, 100% scored three or higher. And that's continued as scores that we received in the past, so that class continues to do well. And the research, which is more advanced, we had 88.9% score three or higher and those were nine students. Studio art and drawing and 2D art and design. Just taking a look at total AP students with scores of three or higher. You can see for 2020, Kings Park's 80% of our students are scoring three or higher, AP students, total students. Last year was 82, so even in the challenges of 2020, we went from 82 to 80, which is still a very good number. Just some summary results with our total scholars, there's 139 AP scholars. And you can see 65 were AP, 24 were with honors and 50 were with distinction. And you can see the definitions of each award down here. Scholars are received scores three or higher on three or more APs. And then to be a scholar with honors, you score at least 3.25 on all AP exams and three or higher on four or more. And with distinction, that's 3.5 on all AP taken exams taken and three or higher on five or more of the tests. Students who receive the Capstone diploma. You can see the requirements there to be a Capstone diploma. You would score three or higher in AP Research and Seminar. And for AP exams with a score of three or higher and that would get you the Capstone diploma. The seminar and research certificate, you would score three or higher on both AP Seminar and Research. Number of AP exams written and just keep in mind as our enrollment declines at the high school, so that's a factor in here. So we do see 678 papers were written in 2020, but we do see that with also a declining enrollment. So in order to look that, make that comparison between percent of enrollment. You'll see AP exams as a percentage of the high school enrollment, it's still 65% and in 2019 it was 67%. We have about 33% of our students taking AP exams currently. So those are just some results on the 2020 AP exams. Again, thanks to Dr. Lester for serving as the AP Coordinator for all our support of the students. The teachers who continue to do a wonderful job, they really stepped up during the COVID crisis and made sure our students had what they needed and supported them. And congratulations to our students, I commend them for their participation, their perseverance and to finish their journey as an AP student. We continue moving forward to encourage more students to take AP exams. We believe in that challenge and we think they'll gain a lot out of it beyond the score of three, four or five. They walk away with real important skills that prepare them for college and post-secondary careers. And those are just some of the highlights and feedback concerning our AP scores and results for 2020.
Thank you, Dr. Partizano, that was all very positive news. Alright, so we are going to move on to public comments for agenda items only. Board of Education will hear public comments that address voting items on tonight's agenda only at this time. Speakers must state their first and last names to the district clerk and then address their comments to the board. Comments by any individual may not exceed three minutes. A physical timer will be used to monitor this time limit. The public comment sections of this meeting will not exceed 30 minutes in total. Due to confidentiality concerns, the board does not permit speakers to raise issues concerning a specific student or a specific personnel matter. Such concerns should be presented to the superintendent after the board meeting. So we are going to use a timer, which I think you can see right here by Dr. Egan. So. To avoid offending anyone, we want you to know now that we will be enforcing the three-minute time on it. So anyone who is speaking past the three minutes and. When asked to close, you know, to finish their statements. If you don't, we will be using the mute button just to be there to everybody who wants to get an opportunity to speak. So right now, we're taking public comments just on voting items, is there anyone that has any public comments? So right now, we're taking public comments just on voting items. Is there anyone that has any public comments? We're not seeing anyone. If anyone does, if they just want to speak up. Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the September 15, 2020 regular meeting. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the minutes of the September 15, 2020 regular meeting. I have teachers teach with these masks on all day long. It's hard to talk with them for any length of time. Moving on to new business non-voting. Policy discussion.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It's been a few months since we formally looked at or updated any of our board policy. We periodically do this throughout the course of the year. We will get policy updates from Erie One Voces, which is a service that we use, or sometimes from, from legal counsel, or sometimes a recommendation through an audit. And we have a couple of those policies to take a look at this evening. There are six of them in particular. It takes generally two meetings to make an update to a policy. There's a first read and a second read. So tonight is a first read on six policies, and it's non-voting. And then if those policies are moved forward by the board at the second meeting in October, the board would officially vote to adopt the changes in these policies. So the, the first policy is Policy 2400, which is our sexual harassment policy. We do have an existing Policy 2400, sexual harassment, that is in need of updating. This is a legally required policy. Not all policies in school district policy manuals are required, but this is one that is legally required. There is a marked up addition to this policy, which is in Board Docs. And the policy needs to be updated for two reasons. Number one, the standard for providing harassment has been lowered from severe and pervasive to whether conduct is subjects an individual to inferior terms, conditions, or privileges of employment because of the individual's membership in one or more of protected categories. So that was one area of legal updating. And number two, the, the law extended the statute of limitations for an individual to file a sexual harassment claim with the state of New York of Human Rights for one year to three years. So that is why Policy 2400 is in need of updating. Any, any questions from the board on that one? These next two policies, 5672 Information Security Breach and Notification, and 5678 Privacy for Student, Teacher, and Principal Data, which is formerly our, our current policy, 7250. Both of these policies came directly from legal and reflect recent changes in education law 2D and Part 121 of the Commissioner's Regulation, both of which address data privacy and security. Any questions from the board on either of those 5,000 policies? The fourth policy is 5681 School Safety Plans. And this policy requires a few revisions in response to recent Office of State Controller audits and amendments to Commissioner's Regulation, Section 155.17, School Safety Plans. The amendments clarified that the district-wide school safety plan and all amendments to the plan must be submitted to the Commissioner of Education in a manner prescribed by the Commissioner within 30 days after adoption, but no later than October 1st, 2019, and each subsequent October 1st thereafter. Additionally, the amendments also required that building-level emergency response plans and any amendments to the plans be submitted to the appropriate local law enforcement agency and the state police within 30 days of adoption, but no later than October 1st, 2020, and each subsequent October 1st thereafter. Any questions from the board on that one? That was a mouthful. We got two left. 6110 Code of Ethics for Board Members and All District Personnel. This was actually a very simple recommendation that was made by an auditor, our IDEA Federal Grants Audit, which recently concluded. The auditor requested that the districts simply add the word agent into this policy. So the policy update makes it clear that established rules of ethical conduct hold true for members of the board, agents, and employees of the district. An agent of the school district would be defined as an individual who might be authorized to act on behalf of the school district, but not be employed by the school district. Any questions on that one? And then last but not least, 7530, which is Child Abuse and Maltreatment. This policy change also came directly from our, our legal counsel. And this policy requires revision in response to the amendments of Section 102 of the Commissioner's Regulation, which were necessary to implement the statutory changes made to education law Article 23-B. Amongst other things, expand who in the district has the responsibility to report allegations of child abuse in the educational setting, and what components must be included in the training in, on reporting allegations of child abuse in the educational setting. Any questions from the board on that one? Okay, and those are policy suggested updates for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. Now, this will be on the agenda at the next board meeting for voting.
You got it.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Egan, all the policies or changes made, that have been made, that you got from legal? These all policies, all these changes have been made?
Correct.
Okay.
And they're, all the updates that have been suggested back, back to March. And that, that's why there's a bunch of them all at once, because they've been accumulating.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, new business voting, personnel facilities, personnel schedule, Mr. Craig.
Good evening, Mrs. Nally. Just a few highlights for the personnel schedule this evening. For our instructional staff, we do have the appointment of Ms. Caitlin Fox as a new part-time music teacher. She'll be taking over the choral program at William T. Rogers. In addition, some additional extracurricular assignments for the school year and per diem subs as well. And for our non-instructional staff, we do have the appointment of Ms. Francine Fleming as a special aide at RJO, and Ms. Jennifer Ayella as a new school bus driver joining our transportation department. And those are your personnel updates for this evening.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And congratulations to all our new employees. Next is Authorization to Sign Allowance Authorization, RJO-1 with Milcon Construction Corp., and Change Order G1 with Crossroads Construction Corp. For partial roof replacement and toilet renovations at RJO Intermediate School. Mr. Craig.
So these two are resolutions, Miss Nally, a part of our, our bond work. So the, the first resolution is in regards to the roof work at RJO. So as the board knows, every bid has an allowance authorization as part of it. So for the RJO roof, we have a $50,000 allowance authorization. So this resolution is to utilize $21,576, which was used to do some gutter work at the RJO roof and some supports. And then the second part of the resolution was Crossroads. This was the contractor who completed the toilet renovation at RJO Intermediate School. So that project has been completed. So this is a credit back to the district in the amount of $51,220. So that's inclusive of the entire $30,000 allowance. In addition, we got some credit, some credit backs, I need, amount of $21,220. So that was some work that we were able to supply and some materials as well. So that's a total back to the district of $51,220.
Great, thank you, Mr. Craig. Does anyone have any questions?
He's gonna do a more detailed update later in the fall.
Okay, great. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas project managers and architects have notified the district of the need to incorporate certain changes into the above capital project, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the following allowance authorization and change order, G1-1, and gives the board present authorization to sign said documentation. RJO Intermediate School, Milcon Construction Corporation, Allowance Authorization, RJL1, with $21,576.6 labor materials to install new stainless steel gutter and support allowance of allowance authorization after application of allowance authorization, RJO Intermediate School, Crossword, Crossroads Construction Corporation, Change Order G1, Credit $51,220. Credits slash charges for tile application, ceiling system, light fixtures, and unused allowance authorization equals a credit of $151,220. Original contract was $632,700. $700 less the change order, G1, for $51,220. Revised contract sum, $581,480. Next is the approval of revised non-contract pay rates for the 2020, 2021, 2020, 2021 school year. Mr. Craig.
This is just, this resolution is a new non-contract pay rate. So we approve the non-contract pay rates every July. So this revision is inclusive of PSAT proctoring. So typically, we administer the PSAT during the school day. So with school days being so critical this year, we've moved it to October 17th. So this will allow us to pay the individuals who'll be working on the 17th administering the PSAT to our students.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the attached revised non-contract pay rates for the 2020, 2021 school year. New Business Voting Curriculum, Approval of the 2020, 2021 Academic Intervention Plan. Dr. Partizano.
Thank you, Mrs. Nally. So every year, we update our AIS plan. We've updated it for the 2021 school year, making note that there were no three through eight exams administered this year and no regents exams. However, we'll continue to use multiple measures, and we will provide academic intervention services for our students. And the plan includes that revision in it. And with the board's approval tonight, we will post that and continue to move forward and provide AIS for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Partizano. Does anyone have any questions? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the attached 2020, 2021 Academic Intervention Service Plan. New Business Voting Finance, Donation of Gifts. As per district policy, all donations must be accepted by the board. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education greatly accepts the following donations. The Director of Technology and Data Systems has secured a donation from New York State Education Department, create, create project of 12 Dell OptiPlex 710 CPUs with Intel processors. This donation will allow the district to replace outdated equipment in elementary computer labs. Value unknown. Fort Solange Septa is donating $250 to defray the cost of blacktop seal coating in the playground area. Total value of donations to date 2020, 2021 school year, $21,623. Next is disposal of equipment. As per district policy, all disposals must be approved by the board. I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education authorizes the disposal of the following equipment. Two Noble High-Speed Floor Cleaning Machines that are broken and from which parts have been removed to facilitate other equipment repairs. Moving on to acceptance of recommend, acceptance of recommendation to add verified new vendors to the approved district vendor list. As per district's policy, all vendors must be approved by the board before any payment can be made. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education accepts the recommendation to add verified new vendors to the approved district vendor list per the attached documentation. Authorization to Establish Tax Levy for the 2020, 2021 school year. Mrs. Mann.
Good evening. This resolution officially sets the tax levy as included in the budget voted on in June of 2020 by the district's residents. The board formally adopts the levy at this time each fall to be sent to the town of Smithtown as they set their tax schedules for the 2021 year based on their assessed valuation and the tax levy.
Thank you, Mrs. Mann. Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Whereas the town of Smithtown Tax Assessor has advised the school district that the new assessed valuation for the district is $47,846,016. And whereas the tax, the tax assessor has requested that the tax levy for 2020, 2021 school year be set by the Board of Education, now therefore be it, be it resolved that the tax levy for the 2020, 2021 school year be set at $73,709, no, I'm sorry, $73,709,163. Next is the acceptance of fourth quarter 2019, 2020 school year treasurer and claims auditor reports. Mrs. Mann.
Yes, this resolution accepts the fourth quarter treasurer and claims audit reports. The fourth quarter reports cover the months of April, May, and June of 2020. Our treasurer, Diane Pullman, is here with us virtually this evening, so thank you, Diane, for your hard work. Her report consists of trial balances, bank reconciliations, cash flow analysis, revenue status reports, budget status reports, and extracurricular activity fund reports. And the claims audit report also covers the period of April, May, and June 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Mann, and thank you, Mrs. Pullman. Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education accepts the fourth quarter 2019, 2020 school year treasurer and claims auditor reports. Next is confirmation of transfers to establish district reserves at the close of the 2019, 2020 school year. Mrs. Mann.
Yes, so at the June 2nd, 2020 Board of Education meeting, a resolution was passed authorizing not to exceed transfer amounts from unexpendant budget funds into reserve accounts. The rest, this resolution now provides the actual transfer amounts when we closed our books, which was when we closed our books, which was $708,498 to the recently established Teachers Retirement System Reserve, $675,000 to the Employees Retirement System Reserve, $675,000 to the Employee Benefit accrued liability reserve, $500,000 to the Facilities Improvement Program Capital Reserve, and $500,000 to the Workers' Compensation Reserve. All reserves remain below their respective allowable thresholds. And fiscal 2020 was an unprecedented year, which allowed for more funding of our reserves than a typical year. Due to the closure from mid-March through the remainder of the year, savings in areas such as electric, heating, fuel, supplies, transportation costs, et cetera, allowed for this funding. And maintaining our reserves will aid in our fiscal health as we approach potentially more difficult fiscal hurdles ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Meehan. Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Result that the following transfers were made to establish district reserves at the close of the 2019-2020 school year as listed below. Keeping you very busy tonight, Mrs. Meehan. Acceptance of independent audit report of Kings Park Central School District for the school year ending June 30th, 2020, Mrs. Meehan.
This resolution formally accepts the district's independent audit report as presented earlier this evening by Mike Naraki. I would like to thank everyone in the business office for all their hard work completing this year's CAFR. And I see Sierra Rosa and Diane Pullman with us virtually. So thanks, special thank you to them for all their hard work. I would also like to thank everyone in the entire district for always following proper procedures and policies diligently, which facilitated a clean audit with no findings or recommendations.
Thank you, Mrs. Meehan, and we are certainly very proud of our business office. Thank you again. Any questions from the board?
Not a question, but I would echo that. Thanks to the business office, also thanks to our audit committee for their work and service and raising some great questions and doing their homework and doing it to support the business.
Mrs. Meehan, I'd like to add that congratulations. I believe this is the fifth consecutive year, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's correct. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so I would, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the Kings Park Central School District is required to send the copy of the independent audit report to the New York State Education Department, the New York State Office of the State Controller, Division of Municipal Affairs, and the National Clearinghouse for Single Audit Reports Bureau of Census. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the financial statements for the school year ending June 30th, 2020, and be it further resolved that there were no management letter findings or recommendations resulting from this year's audit, and be it further resolved that all findings and recommendations from previous audits have been fully addressed as outlined by past corrective action plans, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the transmittal of the independent audit report to the aforementioned agencies. Approval of final AS7 contract with Western Suffolk Bosse's for the 2019-2020 school year, Mrs. Meehan.
This final contract with Western Suffolk Bosse's reflects all expenditures for the 2019-2020 school year. The 2019-2020 expenditures increased from 2018-19 based on student services and district needs.
Thank you, Mrs. Meehan. Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Result that the Board of Education approves the attached final contract in the amount of $5,912,466.83 with Western Suffolk Bosse's for the 2019-2020 school year. The final contract includes all bill services provided by Western Suffolk Bosse's, cross-contracts with other Bosse's, capital, administration, and clerical services. The amount of the final contract for the previous 2018-2019 school year New business voting, pupil personnel, authorization to sign contracts with service providers for the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Colby Rooney.
Good evening. The following contracts will provide for programs and related services for students with disabilities within the Kings Park Central School District.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Colby Rooney. Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby gives the board president permission to sign the attached contracts with the following service providers for the 2020-2021 school year as listed below. Acceptance of CSE meeting recommendations, Dr. Colby Rooney.
Thank you. The attached minutes are from 26 Committee on Special Education Meetings that were held between the dates of August 13th through September 25th.
Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the attached Individualized Educational Programs, IEPs, from August 13th, 2020 through September 25th, 2020, 26 in total. New business voting, superintendent, authorization to add organizations to the flyer distribution list for the 2020-2021 school year. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Result that the organizations listed below receive approval of the Board of Education to be included in email distribution of flyers in the school district for the 2020-2021 school year. PAC 539 Information Day, Long Island Chestnuts Wall Online Program, BSA Girl Troop 539 Open House, Eagle Scout Project Flyer. And we are now up to special reports and announcements from superintendent.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Nally. Hello again. Couple of quick updates. One, on a budget and finance outlook. NISCUS, which is the New York State Superintendent's Association, held virtual meetings yesterday and today. And one of those virtual meetings addressed the budget and financial outlook during COVID-19 in New York State. And the presentation that I witnessed this morning indicated a 15% drop in New York State revenues so far during 2020. It's important to note that school aid makes up about 26% of state spending. So a 15% in revenue drop. The common understanding is that it's going to be very difficult for school districts to not feel some impact in terms of state aid later in the school year. The governor has been pretty open and forthcoming with a 20% cut in state aid, which is roughly a $2.2 million hit to the Kings Park Central School District. So we're watching this very closely. As you might have seen and perceived from this evening's report, we have tried to position ourselves as best we can in the Kings Park Central School District by moving unexpended monies at the end of the school year into reserves in anticipating that in the foreseeable future, we might have some issues in terms of state aid. We have all been eagerly awaiting what might happen with the federal stimulus package, which had been hung up in the U.S. Senate. As some of us might have heard, the Senate was directed to put those negotiations on hold until after the election in November. So right now, there is no good news coming from the state and no good news coming from the federal government in Washington. So we need to continue to watch this very carefully as we move forward through the school year in terms of how the state's finances are doing and how that might impact not only school districts, but towns and other municipalities as well. On a positive note, I've been highlighting our many unsung heroes during the pandemic. Last Friday, I specifically highlighted our custodians and maintenance crew. This Friday, I'll be highlighting our health office staff and in particular, our nurses, who have been working very diligently behind the scenes. So I wanted to publicly thank our nurses. And my highlight of the week will focus on their continued efforts and leadership in the Health Department. I'd like to congratulate our athletics program and our 2019-2020 varsity athletes. At the end of each year, Section 11 awards schools of excellence to public high schools where more than 75% of varsity teams have achieved a 90% average or greater. We had 15 of our teams that had a 90 or above average last year. And we joined one of only 15 high schools in Suffolk County that received this excellence award. So congratulations to Mr. Detiston and our varsity coaches and our programs for 2019-2020, great job. And last but not least, I was very excited to be able to deliver news and recommendations on moving our secondary instructional program forward this evening. Again, I want to emphasize that we did exactly what we said we would do. We would walk before we were going to run. We were going to carefully listen to the input from our community, the input from our teachers. We did it, we did move forward with the Safe Pride Committee's work from the summer, which was really a monumental task. We had very little time and relatively little timely guidance from state. But we put together a really sound instructional model. And now we're ready to build on that and move forward. The two super important things that we need to do moving forward is to continue to support our teachers as best we can. They're doing an amazing job in the classroom. And they are going to be entering into the new world of live streaming. We know that it's not going to be perfect. We know it'll be better and be more interactive than our current model. But again, I want to emphasize that it's certainly not going to be perfect. And I want to stress that and encourage everyone to just be as calm and supportive as we can as we continue to support our teachers and navigate the upcoming updates to Google Classroom, making sure that we have our bandwidth where it needs to be to support all this. But I'm super excited that we're ready to expand our secondary model. And I think, I think at the end of the day, we're going to see most districts in the surrounding area getting to pretty much the same place in the upcoming weeks, whether districts are fine-tuning their elementary program or whether districts are fine-tuning their secondary program. For the most part, I think we're going to end up at pretty much the same place. And I just want to thank our administrators, my cabinet, and of course, our teachers for moving forward together and collaboratively making this possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. And I agree. Oh, big thanks to everybody for putting this plan in place. It has been a huge task and certainly, certainly a whole different way of teaching. Anyone else?
Yeah, Diane, please.
Absolutely.
Two items. Number one is the American Legion Post 944 in Kings Park, for the second year now, has a sponsor of flag program. And I'm proud to say that the Knights of Columbus Council, 821, from St. Joseph's, is sponsoring, putting up the flags for Columbus Day and the Ancient Order Hibernian Smithtown for Veterans Day. And the program's important because it enables the United, the American Legion, to procure new flags and new flag poles. So if you get a chance, please thank any one of those three groups. And then second, the New York State School Board Association will have its convention in October. And besides the discussing the changes in educational law and education fiduciary items, it will include discussions on COVID-19 concerns. So just want to mention that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Detiston. Anyone else? Okay, so we're going to move on to public comments. Board of Education will hear additional public comments. Please follow the procedures outlined for the public comment session earlier in this meeting. In addition, please note that the board will take no action at tonight's meeting. So again, I just want to remind everybody that we'll have the timer set. Please keep your comments to three minutes so that we can give everyone an opportunity to speak. If you have a question, please raise your hand or use the feature, the hand raising feature on your tablet or device. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Bush is talking.
Do you want to go to the question?
I don't think so. I only have four pages. Okay, so we're not seeing anyone with their hand raised. If you do have a question and we're missing you, please speak out. Okay. All right, so we are up to important dates. Monday, October 12th is Columbus Day and schools will be closed. And our next board meeting is Tuesday, October 20th at 7:30 p.m. We'll wait to see where that meeting will take place. So thank you, everyone, for coming and have a good night. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Night, everyone.
Night.